Good evening. We're just a couple of minutes away from getting started. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge and then Kathy J. Cox will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings you give us, our faith, our family, our friends. Be with those who have been so devastated by the hurricanes and the earthquakes as their families and friends try to put their lives back together. Thank you for the first responders, thank you for Springdale, thank you for this council. Please give us the guidance to make the decisions that will serve all of us best. In the Lord's name, amen.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, we do have large print agendas. Brad, do you have them available if any of y'all would like to make use of those? That said, I'm going to call the meeting to order and start things off by asking our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy J. Cox.
Here.
R. S. K.
Here.
All right. This is the Tuesday, September 26th, 2017 regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. And first item of business is item four, comments from our residents. If we have citizens in the room that would like to address the city council, this is a time that the council sets aside each time. We simply ask that you come to the microphone, please keep your comments brief, clearly state your name and address, and understand that no action will be taken tonight on what you bring forward. So if there's anyone that would like to address an item that's not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come at this time, and Kelly's already on her way, but if there are others, we'll come on up after Kelly's finished.
Good evening, everybody. So thank you for the opportunity to talk with all of you. I actually have something very exciting to share with the citizens of Springdale and want you all to all know about this. You may have heard, but there is a mural going up on the municipal airport tower. And this is a really special project. It's actually called the migrating mural, and the subject matter of this is the monarch butterfly. And the art has actually been commissioned through a grant from the Walton Family Foundation. It's actually one of two public art grants that were made for Springdale, and so this is the second of those two. And the art actually depicts what's called a kaleidoscope of butterflies, which is like a group of butterflies, like you have a flock of birds, you have a kaleidoscope of butterflies. And the subject matter is representing a series of murals that are going to go up actually internationally, and it follows the migration path of the monarch butterfly. And what you may not realize is that this part of our state is right in the middle of the flight migration path for monarch butterflies, but they are endangered or they're about to be listed endangered under review for that status, and so we're very concerned about that population. So this mural gives us an opportunity to do a little bit of education about conservation and natural habitat of butterflies. And Springdale has been very, very progressive in this movement. There's an organization called Springdale for Monarchs, and they are volunteer-based. They have a group of wonderful folks, many of whom are master gardeners, that have been planting waste stations for butterflies to stop, lay their eggs, so that they can continue their migration and keep this amazing cycle going. So what I want you to know about specifically for this is that there's a dedication event that will take place on Saturday at noon, and just come to the airport tower. From noon to one, we'll have activities going on, a few things to say about the mural. There'll be things for children to do, even I heard that there's some little butterfly wings for some of the kids to have some fun with. But we really invite everybody to come to this and see this really amazing piece. It's five stories tall, and it's just incredible. So it's something that I think we can all be very proud of here in Springdale. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. You know, they can't hide that thing. I've already seen it. It looks great. Anyone else want to address the council concerning an item that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will move for the, onto the approval of minutes. Council, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
移到
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item six, procedural motions.
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for A and B. Roll call.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
370.
All right, thank you. And on to item seven, a presentation of formal schematic design with renderings for the new Springdale Criminal Justice Complex. Roy's on his way, Roy Decker from Deval Decker Architects. And Roy, welcome.
Thank you.
And look forward to your presentation.
Thank you all. Well, this is a monumental step and a long process to help you achieve a new municipal complex for the city of Springdale. So we want to share with you our schematic design presentation. Many of you have seen it, many of you have been part of the whole development of it, so I have a kind of shortened version of my presentation rather than the 40-minute version some of you have seen recently. But we have conducted a good process that has involved all the departments of the city, the police and the courts. We've had lots of input and guidance from the council, the mayor, the administration, and together in a way, we've all designed this project. This has been really a team effort. So Hight Jackson, our local architectural partner, has played an important role, and Milestone Construction, Mike Davis is here, has also joined the team and provided a lot of good guidance on costs. So with that, I'll get on with my shortened version. Well, except it's not moving. All right, hang on.
It's not working.
I never start this presentation without acknowledging that we are all working for the citizens of Springdale. We are guided by the council and the city administration, and our team involves us, Milestone Construction, Dewberry, Tatum Smith from Rogers, ESI from here in Springdale, and WCS from Springdale. So this is a very collaborative team of the most capable professionals that we could assemble for the city of Springdale. Now, we know that there's a need for a new criminal justice facility in the city of Springdale, and as we were working on the project, we got more and more curious about the numbers that represent this need. So we went back to when this building was designed in 1993 and compared the statistics for population, police staff, court cases, and city staff in relation to what we found in 2016 and what we can look at right now. And I just want to highlight these numbers because they are a testament to the importance of this project for the public safety and public service needed in Springdale. First of all, population. In 1993, the population was about 35,182. In 2016, 78,557, and now, this year, over 80,000. More than 123% of growth. The police staff was about at 75 in 1993. It's at 209 right now, 179% of growth. Court cases, the most profound increase on the courts, we think there was about 5,000 cases, 5,000 to 7,000 cases in 1993. We didn't have good records there then. 22,586 in 2016, and over 24,000 this year. 351% of growth. That is all in the same courtroom that Judge Harper's in, working every day right now. City staff, 325 in 1993, which includes the police, fire department, parks and rec, and animal services. And in 2016, that number was 586, again, including that 209 above, plus the other staff outside the city. Only 80% growth. We've learned recently that Springdale was the second most efficiently-run municipality in the state of Arkansas. It's really, and those numbers really tell it. With all that growth, the city did not grow in the same rate. It maintained good control and good discipline and was very efficient in managing all that growth. The other thing that those numbers tell you is that this building was filled up and used up almost immediately. So as we think about a new facility and we think about the goals for the new facility, we know we need a new criminal justice facility that serves the police, that brings together all the functions that are now in dis separate buildings for the police. We also know that we need to make a good court facility, and both of which need to be secure and safe and serve the citizens and needs in Springdale. And this building can be renovated and reorganized so that the city services that are most used by the public can be on the ground floor, can be accessible, and also be in a secure facility. So I highlight this really just to show everyone that the need is really profound, and we have all sensed that and worked for a solution to best serve the city. So the goals are to provide that facility, but also to make a building that is long-term, that's a 75- or 100-year building, to build in the growth space for more than 20 years of staff growth within the building. So that's where we start, and hopefully we're well on the path to achieving those goals. Go ahead, Brett. The other part of this project is to fulfill the promise of the master plan, which you all worked hard on, that from Huntsville, we would have a northern entrance, that would be a green entrance into the city, into the downtown area, and connect Emma Avenue, the Shiloh Museum, and the municipal complex together as a kind of unified civic district in the city. This is, this new facility will form a part of a family of services and civic buildings and uses in the city, including the high school and the rodeo and Jones Center, and also form a kind of partnership with the major businesses like Tyson Foods in the city. And as we get closer to the building, to the site, we just kind of illustrate the connections to Emma Avenue, Shiloh Square, the Shiloh Museum, Shiloh Meeting Hall, and how those pieces form a unified design composition for the whole city. This is an early diagram that shows how the building was designed, really. I say that it was, it really designed itself because there were some basic relationships that we knew we had to meet. We knew we wanted to increase the access from Spring Street for the public. We wanted to make a very easy inviting building to use. We also knew that we needed to increase security and provide secure parking for the police, for the courts, and for city staff and council on the, in the area to the east between the new building, existing building, and Allen Hall. And we needed to provide better emergency access to Huntsville and Johnson for the police. So that diagram sets up many of the relationships for the project. And then the second diagram shows that this building has to be phased. It's over two phases so that we can build the new building, move into it, move out of this building, and then renovate this building without missing any services or emergency critical functions, not for a day, not for an hour. Dispatch has to function in its existing position and turn the switch and function in its new position. City council has to have its regular meetings. So that sequencing is both a sequencing of construction, but also a sequence of continued service to the city. So the building forms an edge facing west to Razorback Greenway and connects to the whole region. So it is not just a civic building for the heart of Springdale, it is a civic space for the heart of northwest Arkansas, fulfilling Springdale's promise, really, to serve the whole region. It also has architectural values that connect and are related to the community here, the public gathering and the promotion of public gathering space for Springdale. It's an economic building with integrity, simple shapes, well-designed, long-term durability. It has measured civic presence. It's just like the council, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce building. It's got a special front that really is communicating that this is a public building, but it's also economic. It's wrapped in brick otherwise. We are achieving long-term durability and service to the community like the high school building, the original high school building, which has gone through many lives and served this community very well, and it's also, most importantly, about public safety. So those values are the architectural design values combined with those diagrams that help us make this building. There's the site plan, and it shows the landscaping and the potential for a future park. It also shows additional public parking east, I mean, west of Spring Street, and the whole region becoming a kind of landscaped entrance from Huntsville. Now, we did a lot of work with the departments over the summer, met with each of the departments almost five times, interviewing each of the department heads, but also all the staff members to develop a detailed program of all the needs. This is a summary, but it also shows you here that in blue on that pie chart, almost 70% of the building is really provided for public security and service as part of the criminal justice facility. And then the green is the administration picking up that need of public service. The building is a complicated building with lots of rooms and lots of needs and lots of relationships. There's security relationships and functional relationships that we've worked out very carefully to be sure that all the staff are next to the departments they need to be, but also secure and inviting to the public. The public comes in at the top, which is facing the greenway, and that, and there's a single point of entry that's secure, and then there's a street that connects all the departments, the city administration and services on the left, the court and the attorney's office, city attorney's office on the right, and then further right, the police department. On the first floor of the police department is all patrol and evidence, and then there's two more floors above that, we'll just go through them quickly. The council chamber on the left, and then the administration offices, community engagement and human resources, and then on the right, police training. The police right now are training in borrowed space, banks, high school, and that is both a difficult thing, but also it inhibits recruitment of good officers. So this facility will bring all the training facilities together to support the police department, and at the back end there is the IT department, a new server farm and new server space for your IT department. And then the top floor of the police department building, command is up front on the top side, criminal investigation, CID in the middle, and then the new dispatch office is on the east side. So it's a complicated building that unites all these departments and does so in ways that are most functional and secure. The building, the criminal justice building you're looking on the top side there is looking at the police, the front of the police building. The street that connects all the city services, court, together is running across the bottom, and you see the court and then the council chamber and administration building on the right. The secure entry for the police, Main Street into the, I've given this a couple of times in the last couple of days, I'm losing my words now, Patrol Main Street is on the right. So that's a view of the back, actually, but the entrance for the police department. Go ahead, Brett. There's a new expanded court that seats 300 people. Judge Harper, if you look close, is sitting at his bench right there. The building brings natural light in everywhere we can. It uses LED lights, it uses a high-efficiency mechanical system, so we are making a durable building that is low cost to operate as well. Go ahead, Brett. Council chamber, with all of you sitting in your seats, is much like this room, only without the mechanical noise, good audiovisual systems, good security, and it's a room that can be used for many purposes for the city. There are only three spaces with kind of higher-level finishes, it's really just the council chamber, the court, and a training room in the police department. All the other materials are polished concrete, burnished block, durable, nice, well-designed, long-term. We want this building to look brand-new in 20 years and not show wear. And the view from the Razorback Greenway and Mill Street across the future park is also bordered by a plaza that elevates it a little bit and makes a great space, a great public space for the citizens of Springdale, all the city staff, the court, and the police. That's an overview of the building design. I want to tell you a little bit about costs now. So we have also, parallel to this design process, been working very carefully and in a lot of detail, working on different cost estimates and different options, and we've been measuring our research and our design work by the cost of building. We're trying to get the highest value, the best building, but also the most economical cost, watching out for the citizens' dollars all the way through. So the process has been, we have had two complete estimates done, so we want to be sure we're competitively working these costs right from the start. Danny Woolbridge has completed his estimate, and then Milestone Construction completed theirs independently. We compared them, we reconciled them, we made sure we weren't missing anything, and then we used that number to establish the baseline budget. We also had input from ESI, our civil engineers, and our mechanical electrical engineers. So we've thoroughly looked at all the departments of cost to come up with a budget that we think is a good budget, but we've also added contingency and we've added escalation on it. So we know we're not building immediately, and we've got a lot of design work to do. So this is not a number that does not have room in it to absorb change. The cost for the criminal justice facility budget is $35.5 million, and that includes everything to the east of Spring Street and the furniture and equipment for the building. As we move forward, we know this has to go before the citizens of Springdale for a decision. If that is successful, then we'll come back and do our design development work, get ready for construction. And as we get ready for construction, Milestone will actually bid out all of the individual components here in the area for more competitive pricing as we move towards construction. And we anticipate starting construction at the end of next year, October, November of 2018, finishing the first phase, which is the criminal justice facility to the left, by the end of 2019, making those moves and shifts of departments without interruption, and finishing the administration building, renovation of this building, by the end of Any questions? That's the fastest I've ever done that.
That's good.
Very good.
We want to thank you for the honor of helping you with this project, and we look forward to the next phase, and we'll be back here to help present it and answer questions.
All right.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. I'll just go ahead and throw a little more information in there for the folks that may be watching or in the room, because some of this is fluid, but we've been talking for a while about asking the voters of Springdale to approve a bond issue in early 2018. This, again, I'll say it every time, this does not include a tax increase. This is an extension of an existing penny sales tax. And we believe that will generate significant construction dollars, again, at no tax increase to our residents. Each category of projects will be voted on separately by the citizens of Springdale, and each category has to be approved for that category to be constructed. So this would be one of those categories. This criminal justice building would be one of those categories, and again, Roy said 35.5 is where we're at. The other possible categories, certainly I'm confident, infrastructure will be the largest category that will be voted on by our citizens. Should be, it'll be a much bigger number than what this is, probably in the, well, I hesitate to say because those numbers change as the months roll on. Really, with each month so far, we've expanded and we've increased our capability to generate revenue. So I can safely say we're probably going to be at a minimum in that $150 million range total, and then that pie will be divided up over these categories of projects, this being one of them, infrastructure being another one, which will be the largest category, and then possibly others, parks, which we're going to talk about one later tonight, that we hope to see developed as a result of this bond issue. Fire stations would be another, and then animal shelter would be another, if the council sees fit to put all those on the ballot. I hope they will. I think the residents of Springdale have a voice to determine whether these projects they believe are worthy or not, and I'll certainly be out selling them hard. And I think, you know, when you think back in the 2012 bond issue, that was just about half this size, probably about half or less than half the size this one's going to be. And again, it was also without a tax increase. I think everyone will agree that the council was very wise in how they prioritized projects in each of those categories that were passed. We had infrastructure, fire, and parks. And I can tell you on infrastructure, without a Don Tyson Parkway interchange, without a Gene George Boulevard improvements, we wouldn't be seeing near what we're seeing right now in Springdale. And without a great park to the southeast and all the development that's happening down there, our new CL and Willie George Park, without the new fire stations and being able to increase our service area and our coverage area, we would be in a much different place right now than we are, thanks to the, and all those categories passed, I believe, by over 70%. So I hope that we are putting together a plan with these different categories that the people of Springdale, the voters in Springdale will support, and I hope the council will support them. And just on tonight, Roy, your team, Deval Decker, Hight Jackson, Milestone, everyone involved has done a tremendous job of analyzing the need and planning for growth, and I believe it's an expensive building, but it is not an elaborate building or a, something beyond what is reasonable to last and to serve the residents of Springdale for many, many years. And so, and I think that first slide with the growth in Springdale helps illustrate the need, and I hope our voters will agree when the time comes. But I know there will be a lot of questions between now and then, and we are certainly open to address those and answer them willingly and openly. So anyway, thank you again for being here and look forward to seeing you next time. All right? Thank you. Council, anything else before I move on? All right. Item seven, a presentation, oh, we just did that. We don't need to do that again, not tonight. Item eight, personnel committee report and recommendations, and chairman's Kathy J. Cox. Kathy?
Yes. The committee, the council committees met last Monday night. The first to be considered is an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purpose of insurance coverage. Gina has some news that she's going to share with us all. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised.
Last Monday night, we presented to you 12.3 increase, 12.3% increase in our insurance premiums. The next day, Brown &amp; Brown, our brokerage service, received another bid from another company with a 10% increase. He was able to negotiate with Blue Cross to bring that down. So we went from a 12.3% increase to a 10.3% increase with no disruption in our benefits, which is enormous to our employees.
That's good. Good news.
What I thought.
Resolution.
I read the ordinance. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
Where's the resolution be adopted?
An ordinance.
Ordinance. I don't want an ordinance, I want a resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion for the ordinance to be adopted, and did we get a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or questions?
I, Mayor, I still don't think we should be doing this. I don't think it's going to hurt us a bit to go up for
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or questions?
I, Mayor, I still don't think we should be doing this. I don't think it's going to hurt us a bit to go out for bid. If they've lowered it that much, just knowing that they got another quote that was lower. I think going out for bid is the way we should be doing this. I think that's fair to our citizens and our employees. I know that two years ago, we did the same thing, and it actually came out Blue Cross Blue Shield and came back a lot less, a lot less.
Was the process a few years ago, not the same, very same as we've just gone through?
No, they did bids. They actually did, they came in with quotes for us, and we asked them to do bids.
We actually did shop it the same way that we did.
You might have shopped it the same way, but you did bids. You actually went back out for bids.
No, we did that, it's
Two years ago.
It's been longer than that because we did.
I thought we'd been using the same process ever since, and
We've been using Brown and Brown for the last two.
They shopped it two years ago, too, didn't they?
We have used them, and I know that. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, as this council asked for that to go back out to bid instead of having the increase that we were going to have in Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it came back even less. I think that we, I think we would not be doing our citizens or our employees fair if we do not take this out for bid.
It came back less, Jim, because of the utilization numbers were different, much different than this year. We went through the same process. Brown and Brown shopped it the same way as when we had the decrease two years ago.
They came back with one number, Doug, that was higher. It was, what was the percentage that two years ago? Twenty, they were going to increase it by several percent, and we asked them to go back out for bid.
I think, and I'm Todd Setzer with Brown and Brown, but I think it was sixteen percent maybe, and you went to bid, I think they came back with ten percent below. And then last year, we had a rate pass, so no rate increase last year. This year, they were asking for twelve percent. At the time, our closest competitor was sixteen, so we had no negotiating power. And then we got the final offer after we had met, was it Thursday?
Monday.
Monday, Monday. And so, I think it's, so getting them to come back and lower it two percent, it's a little different with health insurance because we're affecting, we're affecting all the employees and their physicians and hospitals. And so it's harder just to change for two points or three points. So we do, you know, we take that into consideration for the disruption of employees.
I asked this question earlier, though. What do we lose if we go out for bid?
I don't think we lose anything to go to bid, but we bid it, maybe not officially in the bid format, but they're not going to come back in a bid and give us different numbers than they already gave us.
They did it before.
Yeah, but I, yeah.
They did it before.
Yeah.
And I think there's a huge difference between a quote and a bid.
And Mayor, wouldn't you explain to us, based on the, our aging employees and the level of claims that we had, that we felt like that this was
We had a tough year last year.
We had a tough year last year. Right now, we're running, right now, we're running a ninety-nine percent loss ratio without admin. And so when they add their admin in, they're running a loss right now. Things could smooth out this year. When we're running well, then competition comes in and helps lower the price. When we have conditions that are, that are big conditions, it makes it hard for a new carrier to come in because they, there's no pre-existing anymore, so whoever walks in has to take everything.
So when they see the level of claims that we've had, they're disinclined to want to get involved with us.
Right, right.
Everyone that provided a price looked at the same utilization numbers as
Exact same.
As our current carrier.
Exact same.
And we have really great insurance for our city employees.
And I'll second that.
Absolutely.
I know.
I won't deny that.
Yeah.
I'm just reaffirming what we already know, that we've got great coverage. When you talk to those who have utilized the system, they have nothing but high praise to say about the costs that were covered. I understand and appreciate what you're saying, Jim, but I just disagree.
I just think that we owe it to them to go ahead and go out for a bid. As you said, we're not going to lose anything if we do it, but we might gain some.
Well, I think we did go for bid. I understand, I think it's a difference without distinction that you're bringing up because what would it benefit anyone that we shop insurance with not to give us their best price?
Doug, the whole thing is, is two years ago, we got a price from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it came back at a better price once we made a bid. Don't ask me why they done it.
I thought we went through the same process. I thought we shopped it just like, we shopped it, Jim, just like we're shopping it this year.
We made them go out for a bid, Doug.
I'm not sure we're using the same.
Well, and I'm saying that for us, the bid and the quote is the same thing. It's not going to be a difference. I mean
Did we, did we or did we not use the same process two years ago?
Yeah, we did.
Did you, two years ago, did you get quotes from other companies?
We did.
And were they higher or lower?
They were higher. Two years ago, the
And we still went out for bid and got Blue Cross Blue Shield back in here at a much, much reduced price.
Yeah.
So why can't we do it today?
I think that, if I remember, I think at the time, they had made a million dollars off the, from the previous year. And so they had room to push it down. That's
Again, they're, we're talking, you know, on the ratios you're giving us and stuff, that doesn't give us hard-faced money. So they didn't make as much as they wanted to, so they're going to raise it, right? Doesn't mean they didn't make money, didn't mean, you know, just they didn't make as much as they wanted to.
Right. So when they give a number, they're trying to project what they're going to spend over the next year, and they have no idea of the claims. And that's, you know, the other side of that is we go self-insured. If we think we can run the, if we can play the claims game, we go self-insured. And so we pay for an administrator, and then, you know, then it's our dime, then it's our dime if we win or lose.
And I'm not thinking anything like that at all. I'm just saying that I think that we ought to go out for a bid.
Yeah.
The two percent reduction a result of the meeting we had last week where we went back to them and
That's right.
And so they reduced it another two percent for us.
Well, it was, yeah, it was the result of receiving another quote the next day that was lower, and then going back to them.
Right. It's just, I don't think the city wants to move five hundred and something employees over for two percent. So if I can get the same rate from the incumbent, you know, and not disrupt, that's what we try to do. If it's significant, you know, you've got to make a change, but.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Reed?
No.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
May the emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Ordinance carries six one, emergency clause carries seven zero.
Our next ordinance that we addressed was an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of a human resource management computer program.
This is an applicant tracking system plus, it's got a lot of things that the HR department's lacking right now. We're a very manual process department. This will help us automate our application process as well as our evaluation process and make it a more smooth transition, I guess, as people apply for jobs over the internet. Our, right now, what we're using is a fillable document, and it does not work the same way that a storage database would, which is what this is.
I'll move the ordinance past.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for Gina? Okay, Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Does that need an emergency clause? Would the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes. Both the ordinance, emergency clause carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, Planning Commission's report and recommendations, and Ernest is going to take that tonight. Patsy is not here tonight.
This is a resolution approving a waiver of subdivision regulations as set forth in Chapter one twelve of the Springdale Code of Ordinances in connection with LS seventeen dash twenty-six, a lot split for Charles Thomas.
Resolution, the resolution pass.
Second.
Just by, just by way of reference, this is, this was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and the reason they're asking for the waiver is that the property's been split into three lots, which would require the subdivision regulations.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Anybody in the audience?
The property's been spread in, split in three lots, or they're wanting to split it into three lots.
That's the proposal. In order to do that, they would have to make certain improvements, and they're asking to waive the subdivision regulations.
Well, they have to, okay, we don't have to grant the lot split?
They're, because they've already split it into two lots, they have to, they have to waive the second bid at the Apple in order to be able to build another house on that lot, on that property. And the Planning Department's rules are, if you, after you split it once, then you have to go back and apply for a subdivision. Just asking.
Mike is correct.
So the commission planned to approve the lot split?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they did.
I guess that doesn't come
And what it is, they voted to go ahead and override their typical procedure they have because they know it's, the folks are just splitting it so they can build another house on this particular parcel.
The lot split seventeen dash twenty-six, and for the lot split to be approved, the council has to approve the waiver of subdivision requirements.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item ten, Finance Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
The first item that we had before the Finance Committee was a resolution authorizing the grant of an energy utility easement to Black Hills Energy across property owned by the city of Springdale, Arkansas, parcel number eight one five two nine two two three zero zero zero, Washington County, Arkansas. Ernest, do you want to talk about this one?
I do. You had asked at the committee meeting that I go back to Black Hills Energy and ask if they would add language to the easement document, that they would agree to put the cost if the line ever had to be relocated, and I communicated that to them, and I did not receive a response. So if you want to table this until the next meeting.
I'd recommend we table it, because it's not going to affect anything right now.
I agree with you, Mike.
Because the, and the whole idea is, it's probably a moot point, but the whole thing is, we've had instances before where we've granted utility easements, and they've had to be moved. And even though I'm sure this is a high-pressure gas line, probably won't happen, it just doesn't hurt to protect the citizens.
Is that a motion?
It is.
In a second.
You trying to tell me I'm long-winded, Mayor? I understand. Okay.
I just didn't hear the word "motion." That's okay.
I will also mention, Mayor, I forgot to mention that there was some discussion about this resolution, and there was no recommendation made by the committee. It was just forwarded to the council without recommendation.
Because we were asking for that stipulation.
Well, not only that, there was also some discussion about just granting it.
All right, no cause.
Whether or not that was
Yeah, no cause. That's true. That was a discussion.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, anyone? Okay, this is a motion to table.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Carries seven zero.
Second item on the Finance Committee report has to do with the levy of Washington County averlorm taxes. I'm trying to get to
N B?
Heading. Somebody else could read the title. Mine's not pulling up.
First one is a resolution to levy Washington County averlorm taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Can we take both of those at once, BNC?
No, we need to do them separately.
We did, every year we tried that.
There's a difference. Yeah.
Where's the resolution pass?
Second.
Couldn't we just scribble a note on it and not have to pass it?
I'd rather not. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else? Okay, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Carries seven zero. You may read the second one. Resolution to levy Benton County averlorm taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas.
Would the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay.
Reed?
Yes.
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item eleven, Parks and Recreation Committee Report and Recommendations. Chairman is Mike Lawson, and Mike couldn't be here tonight. Do one of y'all want to take this, or do you want me to? I'll go ahead and read the resolution. This is a resolution authorizing the park located between County Line Road and West Downham Road to be named the Shaw Family Park, and committee recommended approval.
Would the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I have talked with the Shaw family.
Do we need to explain to the people?
This will, as I mentioned earlier, and I'll be short on this one. As I mentioned earlier, the plan, hopefully, is to develop this hundred and twenty acres that the city owns out between County Line Road and West Downham and bordered on the west by Ball Road to develop this hundred and twenty acres into a park and be called Shaw Family Park. And we do have just a very preliminary rendering up there. We've been able to show this to the Shaw family and also to the Parks and Rec Committee. That includes everyone here at the council. And got very positive responses. I think the next step will be to set a date for a public meeting so that our residents can come out and look at it, and that we'll be setting that very soon. Melissa, do you already have that figured? Come on up.
You might mention the donation.
That's where I was.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good. Thank you. The reason we're calling this Shaw Family Park is because the Shaw family has generously donated, made a generous donation of almost five hundred thousand dollars to go toward the development of this park. And we certainly thank the Shaw family for this generous donation and are happy to name the park after the Shaw family, so.
All right, so we do have a date for the public input meeting. It'll be October fifth, four to seven PM in this room, at two oh one Spring Street. And we will be putting out the information tomorrow, now that the park officially has a name, if you guys, you know, push it through. So once it, once it has a name, we'll get that out tomorrow morning.
And we can go ahead and put this rendering on our, on that notice so that people can kind of at least have an idea of what it's going to be?
Yeah, so the rendering and also the comment form will be available on the website, so you can view that. You can submit your comments online if you can't make it to the meeting, or you can come to the meeting, whichever one works best for you, but all of it will be available tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, naming the Shaw Family Park. Any other comments or questions? If none, Denise?
Jaycocks?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes, and again, thank you to the Shaw family.
Absolutely, and we will have, we will make other opportunities as that park is developed and we open it to certainly give, do recognition to the Shaw family, so. Very exciting for us, and I know, not only for the people that live around there, people from all over Springdale will utilize this park when it's, when it's constructed, so. Item twelve, Street and CIP Committee Report and Recommendations, Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
We had a meeting last week at Street and CIP, and this is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for a drainage project. This is a project on Lowell Road in Randawobi that is affiliated with MultiCraft and not to exceed two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, fifty cents. And recommendation from the committee to approve it.
Would the resolution pass?
Will the resolution pass?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Very much needed drainage project and an opportunity to partner with a local developer and business owner who, to help make this happen, so. Go ahead, Denise.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
carries seven zero.
Okay, thank you. And item thirteen, I'll turn over to our city attorney.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas. Properties located at eight eighteen Crutcher, twenty-six ninety-two Dandelion, and six oh nine South Cleveland.
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room need to speak to any of these properties? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.